From some of the talk in the community, I want to talk about first of all, I want this town to get back to where it used to be, the peaceful, neighbor-loving town. And I'm sure our leaders can accomplish that. So with that, dear heavenly father, please bless this community and bless these leaders. That they can return their love of your neighbors yourself, that we can unite and bring this community back for our children to be raised up, that they can say West Memphis is where we're from. I praise this all in the sweet name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Let's place the flag, please. Pleasantly to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. The Clerk, will you please call the roll?
President.
Here.
City Treasurer, Martin.
Here.
Councilman Cat.
Here.
Councilman Crum.
Here.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Councilman Hope. Councilman Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilman Monday.
Here.
Councilman Pooten.
Here.
Here.
Councilman Robertson.
Present.
Councilman Willis.
Here.
With the coin being present, do you see the bid openings?
May I make a motion, we turn the utility bid back to utility for property of the police.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Oppose? Those bid openings go back to utility department. We have a special presentation today, and I'm going to ask our chief of police, Chief West, will you please come forward? Chief West would be presenting our officer of the mind, Mr. Michael Claiborne, when you come forward, please.
On April the thirteenth, a young lady was in the ditch and water was millways her vehicle door. Officer Claiborne immediately went into the water and assisted in getting the female out of the car. Later that same night, he received a call about an eleven-year-old unresponsive male due to the water amount on the road. Officer Claiborne picked the child up and began walking toward the end of the street and met the ambulance so that the child could receive medical attention. Congratulations, officer.
Mr. Mayor, council members, chief, assistant chief, all my lieutenants and captains, I really appreciate this opportunity to be a part of the West Memphis Police Department. We're just doing what we do. My training officer, Officer Shelton, he let me be a police officer, and I thank you for the importation, sir, of knowledge, and thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
I get a motion in second to approve the minutes, please.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Oppose? Those minutes are approved. We got a third reading of old business. City Attorney.
Our third reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number fifteen forty-eight to allow the sale, consumption, or possession of beer and wine products on public property owned and designated by the city of West Memphis and supervised by the West Memphis Advertising and Promotion Commission.
I get a motion in second.
So moved.
Second. In the discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye. No.
Oppose? Well, Ms. City Clerk, will you call the roll on it?
Councilman Cat.
Yes.
Councilman Crum.
Yes.
Councilman Harris. Councilman Hope.
Here.
Councilman Hut-
Yes.
Councilman Hutchinson.
Yes.
Councilman Monday.
Yes.
Councilman Pooten.
Yes.
Councilman Robertson.
No.
Councilman Willis.
No.
Ms. Harris, did you want to vote, or? Abstain, no. Y'all abstain? Okay, well. So it was sixty-three, the one that does pass. And City Clerk, can you get that one as a number, it passes?
Ordinance number two-five-zero-six.
Mr. Pooten?
Make a motion, we read R-one through R-three and O-one by title only.
Second. Can you get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Oppose?
Thank you. Resolution adopting by reference the repetitive loss area analysis consistent with the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System requirements.
Motion in second.
So moved.
In discussion?
Yes. Could we get the, uh?
Ms. Standrich.
Ms. Rhonda, will you come forward, please?
Can we get Rhonda to speak on this, please?
For the public's information, this is a plan that we had to create, to kind of do an examination of our repetitive loss areas. This is just a preliminary requirement that basically FEMA for being a part of the CRS program. So we just kind of looked at all of our areas, the structures in the areas, things that would take to mitigate those structures, and just put together this report, like I said in the pre-council, just as a preliminary approval for the CRS program.
Any more discussion? The question? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Ms. City Clerk, will you get that resolutional number?
Resolution number twenty-one ninety-five.
Twenty-one ninety-five. R-two?
R-two is a resolution authorizing the execution of a mutual aid and assistance agreement with other members of the Arkansas Municipal Power Association and for other purposes.
May I get a motion in second?
So moved.
In discussion?
Could we get Todd to come up and explain this to our-
This is a mutual aid agreement amongst the Arkansas Municipal Power Association members. Those members are the other municipal electric utilities within the state of Arkansas. This is basically for when if we have a natural disaster of some type, we can call on those other sister cities to come in and help us, and this dictates how we're going to pay them and make sure that we're taking care of, for payment. This is required by FEMA, so if we do have that natural disaster, it's pre-written so that we can get reimbursed by FEMA. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you.
All in favor, aye. Oppose? That also passed. Ms. Clerk, will you get that resolutional number?
Resolution twenty-one ninety-six. I mean ninety-seven. Oh, twenty-nine-six, I'm sorry. Twenty-one ninety-six.
R-three?
R-three is a resolution authorizing the mayor to do business with Alliance for Rural Impact for grant writing services for the West Memphis Planning and Development Department.
Motion in second?
So moved.
In discussion?
Can we get Mr. Lueker to come up and explain that one?
Thank you. This is a grant opportunity that is sponsored by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the area that we are focused on pursuing this grant would be the east end of West Memphis and the area in and around the housing authority. And if we were successful in obtaining this grant, it would give us funds to create a plan for that area with some implementation dollars to start implementing that plan. But also, it would put us in a first position for a second grant, a couple of years down the road, that could be up to thirty million dollars to address blight and redevelopment for that neighborhood.
Say to address implementing a plan, what will this plan consist of? Could you explain a little bit?
Well, first, we gotta, we're applying for the grant to do the plan. So the plan will be developed if we're successful in getting the planning grant, and that we will have much public input by all the neighborhood, by you as a council body, into what goes into that plan.
Basically focused on the east end of town?
Yes, ma'am.
And there is a lot of blight because we just concluded our litter index survey, and of course, those areas were the worst scored.
Yes, yes. This is a very competitive program, but we do have a compelling story to tell, in that we do have need there, but we also have some good things coming to that area with a new school being built, possibility of a second school being built in that area. We have a police and substation, fire, excuse me, police and fire substations slated to come to that area. So we do have a very good story to tell. It's adjacent to an opportunity zone, which would be attractive to investors, so there's a lot of good components there, and it's, we're just hoping for the best.
Paul, I got a question about that opportunity zone. How far does it come west, that, that west, from, from?
That, Mallory knows the opportunity zones boundaries better than I do, but they follow census tracts. That particular census tract is very odd, and it begins on the east side of the South Loop, and then comes around to the southern portion of the South Loop, and then goes out into the county. So as it, for West Memphis, it primarily is our very east end of town for that opportunity zone.
When you say come down to the county, well, if you going down south, you're crossing-
Yeah, it would be outside, that, what I'm telling you, that census tract is, goes beyond the city limits of West Memphis. But as it is in West Memphis, it primarily is east of the South Loop, and then once it gets north of the interstate, it comes back west some.
It just basically covers from the South Loop to the river, to the loop.
Okay.
And north of town.
North of South Loop, I mean, west is, I mean, east of South Loop, north, going around-
For the city of West Memphis, that would be correct.
So could you describe it in wards, or in a ward issue? I mean, what ward are we talking about, may?
Ward five.
Maybe a portion of Ward four. For that opportunity zone, we have two, and the other one is in the northwest part of town by the mega site.
Okay.
Okay, okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Particularly the one that you're speaking of, it's just-
It would be, for the area of West Memphis, it would be primarily east of the South Loop, in that part of town.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Any further questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Ms. Clerk, will you get that as a number as well?
Yes. Resolution twenty-one ninety-six, seven.
O-one?
O-one, an ordinance approving the hiring of Kimberly Hamilton for bakery services for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Well, we're just going to read that one time, we'll come back in two weeks, make whatever changes. I need permission to sign an agreement between brick and mortar for retail recruitment purposes.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion about it? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? I also need permission to sign an option and lay an lease agreement for the cell tower.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Well, that passes as well. Trace, were you saying aye to your pants, or?
I'm saying aye, I'm opposed.
Oh, you're opposed. Ms. City Clerk, you call the roll.
Councilman Cat.
No.
Councilman Crum.
Yes.
Councilman Harris.
Yes.
Councilman Hope.
Yes.
Councilman Hutchinson.
Yes.
Councilman Monday.
Yes.
Councilman Pooten.
Yes.
Councilman Robertson.
Abstain.
Councilman Willis, Willis?
Abstain.
Well, it was six yes, one no, and two abstain, so it passes. I don't even decide an agreement. Committee reports. Councilmember Monday, Police Department?
We had met, we'll meet, we got a new time, which will be next Wednesday at four o'clock, next Wednesday at four o'clock. And I'd like to ask the chief and the assistant chief to be there, we need to talk to y'all about something. Is he still here, the chief? Oh, okay.
Councilman Hope, Parks?
No.
Councilman Crum, Airport?
Uh, no.
Councilwoman Hutchinson, Personnel?
Personnel, we met, mayor, but we are doing some restructuring, so I would like to give a full report in our first June meeting. I'll be more adept to give more information then. Thank you.
Councilwoman Robertson, keep West Memphis beautiful.
Right, we did have our litter index survey this week, and the city has improved greatly as far as litter control and cleanliness, but there are quite a few pockets of our city that needs to be improved. Most of the areas were scored a one and a two. Councilwoman Hutchinson was one of our scores, and basically, we don't talk about the scores when we are doing it, so everybody has an independent score. And when I looked at the report today, when Rhonda sent it to me, and I looked at it, we were basically on the same track as far as our scoring was concerned. And the biggest pocket of improvement needs to be in Ward four, so when we do our Keep West Memphis Beautiful cleanup, we're going to be focusing a lot on that area. And also in our rural West Memphis plan, that was some of the areas that we were talking about, the east end of town, so I would say kudos to West Memphis, you're doing a great job, keep up the good work. I see a lot of people that are outside just cleaning on their own, sweeping their own sidewalks and whatever, and I'm very, very thankful that it's catching on as it is, where there are still those pockets. There are still people out there who has a norm, so we're going to keep encouraging and keep working with it, and keep preaching it, and just keep putting it out there, so eventually, everything will work out just perfectly.
Public workers?
No, we have not met this yet.
Are they conclusion, meet?
Their conclusion, Mike.
Budget?
Budget was scheduled to meet last Thursday. We're finishing up the first quarter numbers and have those now, putting it into a spreadsheet so we can present it to the council next Thursday. So we'll meet at noon next Thursday to go over the first quarter numbers, and we'll update the month and sales tax data at that time.
Councilman Pooten, utility?
Utility, we haven't met, we'll meet next Thursday, next Tuesday, I'm sorry. Also, AMP, we met on the eighteenth, and I've given each one of you a copy, it's already, you know, so that's it.
Councilman Willis, Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, we haven't met this month yet. I think we'll meet next week.
Councilwoman Harris, did you have anything? Did you have anything?
No.
Announcement, we got Blues on Broadway tonight, I'm asking Mr. Jim Jackson when you come up and speak a little bit-
Blues on Broadway, starting tonight and every Thursday in May from five to eight. We hope to have it outside in the parking lot at the Civic Complex, basically behind the Civic Center. This being our first one tonight, and the weather the way it is, we might end up going inside. Our alternative plan is the auditorium, which is not a bad plan. I'm pretty proud of the auditorium. So, and we're going to make that decision here in just a minute, once we kind of take a better look at the forecast. But we've got twenty bands coming up, two each night. I need to thank Ponchos and Holiday Inn Express for helping out and sponsoring this event. I really need to thank the AMP Commission for allowing me to do this. Tonight, we have a lady named BB Queen, and Dan Charette in Absolutely Blue. And as we go along, we've got several local original bands, Reba Russell, the Ghost River Grosse Town Blues Band, a young man out of St. Louis named Marquise Knox, Earl the Pearl Banks, and the Peoples of the Blues, Daddy Mac Blues Band, Ms. Zino. We've got a nice lineup. Hope you all come out. It's a free show. Be sure and tell all your friends, family, it's a free show, whether it's inside or not. We are looking forward to it, and I think it'll be a good thing for the city. I've had a good response, and I'm hoping that we have a big crowd.
More announcements?
I have one I'd like to make. Crenning County, West Memphis Veteran Memorial Program will be, we will have the program Tuesday, May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, at six P.M. at the Eugene Woods Civic Center. If you have a loved one who was a veteran that have transitioned, and you'd like to have them, we have application that we could put, you could put their name in, and we would definitely honor them on that particular day. We'd be more than happy to do so, and you could get with Ms. Patricia Lane here at West Memphis, or Rhonda Standrich here at City Hall. Also, you can get application at the VFW here in West Memphis, the Veteran Service Office in Marion as well, also at American Legion.
I have a question, Mr. Pooten. On last year, you know, you had screened and you brought up all the deceased veterans. Would you do the same thing this year with the veterans that you had last year, or will this be a new group?
Well, we, actually, if they called and they was on it last year, and we still have the information, they will not have to resubmit.
Okay.
But they have to resubmit, you know, the information, we have the information from last year. But you still have to call and let us know that you want, you know, you want it done.
Okay. In actuality, I think Ms. Standrich asked that you complete the form, which there are some out in the lobby, and then she will match the picture with the new form, so we know which ones, make sure we reject.
Thank you.
Any more announcements? We have three citizens that signed up for citizen request. I think we're going to start out with my principal, Ms. Laura Breckenridge, will you please come forward? Whereas that you give your name, your address, and normally give five minutes.
No, she's my principal. I worked under her for years, and I called her the Principal of Peace. Good afternoon. I'm Laura Breckenridge, the former principal of Wonder Elementary School. I'm currently the president of the Wonder Alumni Association Incorporated, and I'm here representing today the Wonder Alumni Families and Friends Committee. I have prepared for you a handout, and at the top, you will see what this is all about. When our, when Wonder closed last year, when we first heard the news, we started immediately planning a celebration, an end of an era celebration. Why? For seventy years in existence. But one of the main events of this celebration is a grand black and gold parade, to be led by former students of Wonder Motorcycle Riders. We are here to request permission to follow the planned route. The parade's step-off will start promptly at ten o'clock A.M. From the new, from the new St. Paul Church on South Eighth Street, where many Wonder students started school. Go north to Broadway, east to Fourteenth Street, and south to the old Wonder football field. We will need the assistance of all necessary city personnel. Please regard this request with your utmost consideration, and provide the services needed to ensure the success of the end of the era for Wonder School. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're asking us to get, give you permission that the West Memphis Department can have that parade on Broadway behind my building, right? Yes. Yes, sir. Better is best. Yes, I do. Further questions?
No, do you have anything to further question? I don't have it.
Well, could you have chief come up for a minute?
Let the chief of police come up.
I mean, the factory has already met on this particular issue.
Right.
And what we come up with is hard closing a state highway. I'm going to try to get it done, that's not going to be any guarantee. If we do the alternate plan we discussed, come up, go down Pope, make that loop. I'm going to try to get it done, but it's not guaranteed.
Okay, but when you said not guaranteed, I mean, what are you referring to? What's the difference?
Christopher Ray has been done over the years.
Well, that's no excuse.
Excuse me?
I said something. I said it's not done over the years.
Apparently, it's been did by the chamber some years ago, and the state observed that, but when you put something different in, it constitutes another process.
But this is a very, very special event. So do we have to go to the White House?
Pretty much.
Let's go.
I think we're going to get that taken care of, y'all.
Say what now?
I think we will get that taken care of, but we better do whatever we need to.
I'm going to walk right now.
Thank you so much, Chief West.
Thank you.
Number two we have, Ms. June Simmons, will you please come forward? I think you know the process, name and address in five minutes. What are you doing?
Good afternoon to the mayor, city council, chamber members. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm going to stay within my five minutes, because as a matter of fact, I'd like to know now if I do it, if I'm here three, can I have the other two to go over to the next meeting? Y'all are in the number last, so I guess you won't give it to me. Anyway, I'll be brief. I am here because again, I'm saying that I oppose using the Roberta Jackson Center for anything else other than helping our children, our young adults, and people in the city. I know what you have said that you have planned for. I oppose that, and I will continue. Now that I've said that, here's some things that I'd like to see. I'd like to see the memorandum that I was told about, if there's one. Whoever told me might be, I don't know whether they really know or not, but I'm just saying, if there's one that has been done on that, then I would like to see that. Where it, wherever it is, I'd like to get a copy of it. I'd also like to know if the Roberta Jackson Center is a community building. Is it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's a community building. Okay, then, I'd like to see where this proposed effort that is on by the council and East Arkansas area on aging. I'd like to see where there has been communications with the community. I'd like to see where we've had meetings, have there been any meetings? I'd like to see those minutes. I'd like to see everything that's pertaining to what I'm hearing, of what I am to understand, that all procedures coming up to you're allowing East Arkansas area on aging to take part of a building that could be used for our young people, our young adults, our seniors, of which I love saying, I- our seniors, of which I love saying I'm one. I'd like to see that done, and I'd like to see those, uh, whatever papers you have to dedicate. And, uh, I got those two minutes left, thank you. You sure may, but not, not on my two minutes. Who would I prefer to get the building? The community. You got, uh, we got churches, we got, um, uh, uh, organizations, we got people that are not really doing a, a great deal now that would like to do it. We could set up all kinds of programs in that building that will help the children, the adults as well, and whoever else they wanna protect. Now, of course, it has to be organized, but it could be.
I, I'm saying that it, it happens, not one church has changed.
Well, this is a new. Okay, I'm sorry. The whole building should be ours. The whole building should be the community's. We should make those decisions. Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Larry Brewer, will you please come forward? Give your name, five minutes.
Panto. I'm Larry Brewer, general contractor, mechanical contractor, do a lot of work in this town, and I come to you today to ask for actions on behalf of the citizens and the contractors of the area, not just West Memphis. During this donut shop install, I've had the police called on me by Johnny Brown for no reason. I've had the state mechanical inspector called on me at that same location for no reason. And I've had the, uh, state electrical inspector now calling on me at the direction of Johnny Brown for no reason. I personally talked to Mr. Hope, Mr. Pulliam, Mr. Willis, Mr. Cat, Mr. Crum about the harassment, the bedevlement, vexation, or whatever you wanna label it. I call it outright vengeance and bullying. You get expelled from school for doing that one time, one time only. Johnny continues, "I brought it to the attention of the council, but nothing fruitful has became of it. I spoke to you, Mr. Mayor, about it, I was told I sounded like a broken, or a recording from other contractors. Believe me, there would be more if they were not afraid of Johnny and his political retaliation tactics." Why else would an electrical inspector be called to a job that's been open, and a business that's been open and fruitful in the city of West Memphis for more than three weeks? I'll tell you why, it's payback, or retaliation from speaking out at the last meeting. I'll take it a step further, the city bids that are coming in that are exponential, that are too high. The contractors have to add a lot of money in there to make up for that harassment, they're out to make money, and they've gotta, they've gotta add that in while trying to perform their job. It's true, you guys took an oath when you got elected that you would faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the West Memphis Mayor and Council, of which you're now entering when you first took office. I call on you now to do the duties, handle the harassment, the bedevlement that is falling on every contractor, not just myself. I brought this to your attention, now it's your turn to act, and enact change for the betterment of West Memphis. We're all here to help, the contractors are here to help, we shouldn't be harassed at every turn, and, and some of the ignorant, ridiculous stuff that's going on concerning some of these buildings, and some of the, the requirements that, that are not in a book, it's just what he prefers. Smoke wall, I mean firewalls with wooden doors in them, what good are they? Smoke walls that go to the adjacent buildings, what good are they? What good are they?
Could you bring me up the date on what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am, I, can we stop my?
Yeah, stop the time, I definitely want, I, go ahead, go.
We, we were called in, uh, Ms. Stephanie down here at, uh, six twenty West Broadway, was trying to put in a donut shop, she started June of last year, trying to get things rolling on it, and she's a, she's an Asian lady, so her English is kinda broken, and i- if you talk to her for a while, you understand her. She called me in October, Brewer Services in October, to help her. I came to City Council, I mean, came to City Hall over here to code enforcement, and I was told that we've done, told her one time what she needed to do. I said, "Well, look, I'm new, you know, we're here to help her, I know stuff's happened in the past, but we're trying to move forward with this project."
So y'all redoing a building or?
It's a lease space that was existing, uh, there's five lease spaces, and it's on the other side of the Citco Station, right across from the high school, uh, it used to be insurance company in there, there's five lease spaces in there. We had to up the electrical service to accommodate. We've had to do stuff that was, that was above and beyond what was called for by any, any of the contractors in West Memphis that were doing anything else, or any of the other buildings, load calculations. Load calculations again, load calculations again, we were rejected, rejected, rejected. Then I was told that we had to separate the light in the bathroom from the exhaust fan in the bathroom, neither one of them pulled over two amps.
Ms. Brewer, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And you're from, what's your address again?
I'm from six fourteen Alexander Street in La Panto, I'm a previous citizen of West Memphis Marion area, I li- I grew up here.
Okay.
Uh, and I care about this town, or I wouldn't, I mean, it takes me an hour and a half to drive down here for five minutes.
I understand, I understand, my biggest concern is, uh, I've never talked with you.
Right.
You, uh, you mentioned the duties that we all have been sworn in.
Yes, ma'am.
As I take mine seriously, but your biggest concern, are you under the impression that the city is doing, I mean, kinda, in a nutshell, what are you, what, what are your claims? And what can, what are we gonna leave with today to help you and your clients?
What I think, and I'll be glad to meet with each one of you, and we can go to the donut shop one-on-one.
Okay.
I started with the, uh, councilman in that area.
Okay.
And the concern I have is undue harassment outside code.
That's what I want to know. Your, your main concern is undue harassment outside of code.
Correct.
Okay, so that, because I was trying to understand where, where the council was tied in to.
Well, can I just say something, so things won't get too far out of hand here? Okay, I know you talked to, you talked to myself and a few others here, but let me just explain something to you, then I'm gonna direct you to the city attorney. Actually, as a councilman, when, 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 when you have employees matters, that's not a function of, of ours. And I'm gonna direct you to him, that's why I say before this get blowed out of the bush. The city attorney, so will you please just let him know what our responsibility is and so.
I'd like to ask you a question though, before you do, if you don't mind. Was I one of the last council people that you talked with down there, Mr. Brewer, do you remember?
Uh.
Cause I know we.
No, no, you weren't.
But, but when you and I, when you and I talked, and Johnny was down there, and we all talked, we agreed that there was two items to be finished, right? There was two, he made a statement, there was two items, he called them off, something to do with the second round. I don't remember what the other was, and you, I looked at you and I said, "Is that okay with you? Do you have a problem?"
Right.
Any of this whatsoever? Your answer to me was what?
No.
Yes, sir. You said none whatsoever?
And, okay, then, then it goes on to.
Well, wait a minute, let me finish, then I'll let you go, and I'll be done. But then, but then I find out that you never even showed back up to finish the job, so what happened, our conversation?
No, we finished the job, we completed the job. Yes.
Okay, well, I was wondering what happened with the two items that were not done, and I was under the impression you didn't finish the job, another contractor.
Well, one was the feeder going into the building, is the reason he wasn't okay, the service of the day you were down there. It's been finished, the inside panel had been changed out, that's why we were waiting on that feeder wire, because it goes, it's a bigger wire that won't fit in the existing panel, it had to be changed out prior to that feeder wire being run.
But you did finish the job.
Correct, I finished the job completely.
Okay.
Mr. Pulliam, hold on, city attorney. Mr. Brewer, my name is Joyce Gray, and I'm the city clerk.
Nice to meet you.
You came to my office and talked with the senior clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Johnny Brown did not send code enforcement, the police office to your building.
Okay.
I did, because my clerk informed me of some irregularities that was going on, and I sent, uh, Mike down there to make sure that you all went operating without the, the permit from my office.
Okay, so, so you sent, you sent Mike down there?
I sent Mike down there, yes, sir.
Mike told me he didn't know who sent him.
Okay, well, I'm taking that responsibility because I did.
And what was the outcome, if I may ask?
Mike did not come back to me on that, but I wanted to make sure that you had the proper license from my office before you start doing your work.
And were those, we, but they started in eighteen, were they satisfied?
Well, I wasn't here in eighteen, I came on in nineteen.
Okay, well, we were into nineteen when the police came.
Okay, I came down there.
If, Ms. Lang can explain a little bit more?
Yes, sir. At that time, we were looking at an, I mean, at a statute that said that the person in office did not recognize sharing licenses. At that time, you came in and brought in a paperwork of the now existing person in that position stating that a grievous previous person. Once you gave us that paperwork, we acknowledged it. The only thing that you still had to do, even though you have a license from another city, you are still required to meet the requirements of the city of West Memphis, which is to provide a sharing warrant.
Correct.
After you spoke with the mayor, and as far as I knew of, you were resolved with it, you provided me with a sharing warrant.
Correct.
Okay, um, and we let it go.
Yeah, they were already in place, we didn't have to update them.
Alright, so let me interrupt now, I'm the one who made the decision about the, uh, permit, based upon the law that I reviewed. The city where you come from does not have the same requirements that we do here in West Memphis.
Is it permit or privilege license?
La Panto, the privilege license.
Okay.
Uh, as a result, I think you need to have another privilege license, because La Panto does not require the same things that we do, so it's not the same. Uh, I have a different interpretation of that statute than you do. I don't think you've been to law school, I have, so I feel like my interpretation, uh, is more well-informed. Uh, I am responsible for providing legal advice to the city. With regard to personnel matters, that's not something that the city council should discuss unless they're in executive session, which means you wouldn't be here, I wouldn't be here, okay?
Right, I'm very familiar with that.
So, we're not gonna talk about, and we shouldn't talk about, any personnel matters in an open city council meeting. That's only supposed to be done in executive session for any employee in the city.
I agree.
So nobody should be talking about anything to do with hiring or firing an employee in the city council meeting unless we're in ex- in executive session, okay?
And I did not mention firing or hiring or anything there, I'm, I'm complaining about the donut shop and the harassment.
Well, what do you want the result to be if it's not firing?
Uh, correction.
Okay, well, you're talking about a personnel matter then, okay?
No, I, I'm talking about a city matter.
And I'm telling you, it's a personnel matter, and when you're talking about an employee and any type of discipline with regard to that employee, so that shouldn't be discussed in an open city council meeting, it should only be discussed in executive session when neither you, or I, or the press, or anybody else is here.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, or anybody else in this council chambers.
Okay.
Alright.
Any more questions?
Thank you for your time, Mr. Brewer. If that's everything, can I get a motion?
That's everything, please.